Okay, um, welcome everyone and I'd like to call to order the December 1st, 2021 Wenham Select Board Meeting. As we have been for months, we are recording this meeting. This is a virtual meeting on Zoom. We have with, so all of our votes will be roll call votes and we have with us full complement of Select Board, myself, Catherine Harrison, Diane Buco and Gary, who's not in my screen right now, but I'm going to put him on my screen and Gary Cheeseman. We have amended the agenda a bit before today and we're, I appreciate everyone's patience. We're going to have to make a few more amendments, one more amendment as we move forward. But to begin, as always, we will start with public input. This is input for anyone in the community who would like to ask a question or make a comment on some related to some item that is not on the agenda, but may be on the agenda at a later date. We, also thanks to folks who are here, most of the people I see here, I think are people who are somehow involved with the agenda. So, I don't know if we see anyone in the chat? No? And I'm going to guess not and move along and turn the announcements over to Ryan, but I'm wondering, Ryan, if you'd like to make a rec? Yeah, one of those. Welcome someone to our team.
Oh, sure, sure.
An introduction.
So I wanted to introduce everybody to Michelle McGovern, a new face on the crowd here. Michelle is our, the new executive assistant and town administrator. So she just started on Monday. Michelle comes to us from the town of Danvers where she worked in the county assessors office. Prior to that, she had a long career with Sylvania and so we, so far we're getting to know one another and as the people have pointed out, she's come back every day, which is great. So we're very excited about that. So, but Michelle, I don't know if you want to, maybe you could introduce yourself to the group and, you know, get them, tell them a little bit about yourself.
Hi, my name's Michelle McGovern. I just started on Monday. I was in Danvers, the assessing office for about two and a half years prior. And then prior to that, I was in a corporate, with a corporate company for 33 years. So I've been in a lot of departments in the corporate world and then I'm assessing with the town of Danvers. So I hope I can bring some value and, and learn a lot while I'm in Wenham.
Well, we welcome you and we're very glad to have you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to be here. Everyone's been so nice. It's your first two days.
Sounds like you started working, you started working when you were 10.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
It was an important task as she has here in the office. She's got an even more important task, which is after this, she is going to be babysitting her granddaughter. So, thank you, Michelle, for making time to attend the meeting. We wanted to provide you a welcome here.
Yes, of course. I appreciate it.
You know, to put a face behind a name. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you for stopping by. We'll, we'll talk again soon.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Take care.
Bye.
Bye bye. Okay, so announcements, Ryan.
Sure, sure. Okay.
Please.
So as a reminder, we've got a few board and committee openings. We've got two openings on the Council on Aging. One opening on the Hamilton Wenham Community Access and Media Committee. Two openings on the IRL Commission, one opening on the Wenham Human Rights Committee, and two openings on the Wish Committee. Anyone who has any interest should be reaching out to, to Michelle, who we just met, at admin@wenhamma.gov. So please let us know if any of the public is interested in any of these openings to, please reach out and we'll get back to you. A reminder that the second bag leaf collection is scheduled for Saturday, December 11th. Remember, a reminder to the public is that the bags or barrels need to be on the curb by 7:00 AM. So most of work is going to be done on the Friday before. So just as a reminder to make sure that the leaves are either in a barrel or paperback. Otherwise, leaves will not be collected. We are not doing loose leaf pickup anymore. This, it has to be in a container for the contractor to pick it up. Just to let the board know, we plan to send out another notice about this. The, our social media channels and update, update our town website. Again, with this notice, it's upcoming Friday. We've also updated the signboard next to the fire, the firehouse as well. So we're trying to get that word out. And those of you watching, please tell your neighbors and friends that that next chance for leaf pickup is going to be December, Saturday, December 11th. So a reminder to the Select Board, our Saturday, Saturday capital budget meeting will be taking place on 8:30 in the morning on Saturday, December 18th. That's meeting is going to take place via Zoom and hope to begin, starting to work on that packet soon to get all that information out to you and to begin to discuss what potential capital items we might be looking at for the upcoming town meeting. Reminder that on Wednesdays from 3:30 to 6:30 PM at the Hamilton Senior Center, the town is working with the town of Hamilton to provide COVID-19 appointments. If you're interested in this signing up, please go to the town website. So with that, Catherine, I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll get into my updates. So first thing, you'll note on the agenda for tonight's meeting that we have our FY22 tax classification hearing. We have been working, well, Steve in particular, has been working diligently with DOR to update our sales and growth figures. Unfortunately, just a preview for you, we were, that information wasn't updated prior to tonight's meeting. So without that approval, we can't move forward and have the board vote on, on the tax classification. So what we likely will need to do is be able to have a separate meeting. We are close on all of this, but just not close enough to be able to approve of those critical state forms. So the hope is that we would have to schedule a quick 10-minute meeting likely for next, early next week with Steve and close that so that we can then get out our tax bills. So Steve is here and is going to provide a little update later on during his, during his update, just to kind of give everybody an overview where we're at and maybe a little bit of preview for what we're going to see when we schedule that next meeting. So that's what we're looking at for. I would note Steve has been basically kind of coming in, basically full-time, trying to get this and all this information updated over the past week or so. And appreciate that effort. And also note to everybody that today is Steve's birthday. So happy birthday, Steve.
Happy birthday. What a way to celebrate.
What a way to celebrate here at the Select Board meeting. So, yes. So if anything, it certainly speaks to Steve's commitment and what he's trying to accomplish for us. But again, was, you know, not tonight, we weren't able to get exactly over that finish line, but we're very, very close and should be, be able to close it out soon. Next topic is to remind the board that we just sent out a notice earlier today that we're having a tribal meeting with the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District School Committee. That's taking place on, on December 8th at 7:00 PM. That meeting is going to be taking place via Zoom. So just to make you aware of that as a reminder to the public that meeting will take place. Today, not only is it Steve's birthday, but it's also the birthday of the Hamilton Wenham Regional Library. So they're having a ceremony today. There was a conflict for, of course, the board to make it, but wanted to express our congratulations to Kim and a team from the library for achieving that 20-year anniversary. And while we can't be with them tonight to celebrate, we are there in spirit with them. So congratulations to them. Next thing is, we've been interviewing and are continuing some of our interviews for the DPW Director and the Assistant Town Administrator positions. Our hope is, goal will be to have the recommendations to you for your meeting on December 14th for appointments to both of those positions. So we're making great progress on that. Appraised of where that is. Last thing for me, another update on the board agenda. We had the, originally had the license renewals for used car and liquor licenses on the agenda for today. Again, you know, somewhat similar to where we are with the classification hearing. We had most of the information, but not everything as complete as we'd like. So Catherine, I made determination to move those approvals and do them all at one time. Again, at our meeting on the 14th, so that you'll have complete applications from all of the applicants who are ready to move forward at that time. So just wanted to give that qualifier and, you know, kind of tee that up for our meeting on December 14th. So that's it. And my thanks to everybody for making Michelle feel so welcome. So she's doing a great job so far. I'm thrilled to have somebody out here to take Nikki, to fill Nikki's position. And those are big shoes, as we all know. But open to actually have Nikki in soon to provide some training for Michelle as well. And I also know we've got Catherine Tinsley as well as a backup, well, to help out as well. So my thanks to Catherine Tinsley for offering on that front as well. So that's my update.
Great. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan before? Move on? No? I just, no, okay. I just have one thing. In the chair's report, I, I would like to read something so that it is on the record and attached to the minutes. Of course, the Select Board knows about this, but last week, or actually on November 19th, we sent out a press release relative to, I'm going to read it to you in a second. Unfortunately, the press release hasn't been picked up by the media quite yet. And that's why I wanted to read this to you, to everyone, and also have it on the record. So I'm literally going to read. So Wenham, Massachusetts, November 19th, 2021. The Wenham Select Board announces that litigation arising from a 2019 sexual harassment complaint registered against the town of Wenham and former Select Board member John Clemensy has been resolved via a mediated settlement. This complaint was initiated by a town employee who received an inappropriate text message from Mr. Clemensy in, Mr. Clemensy. Mr. Clemensy resigned his position along with fellow Select Board member Jack Wilhelm. The settlement and most of the affiliated, and I think those resignations were in January of 2020. The settlement and most of the affiliated legal expenses will be covered by the town's insurance company, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, MIA. Future town insurance premiums, however, will increase reflecting the impact of the settlement. Most importantly, that's my editorial few words, the current Select Board maintains that this type of behavior is unacceptable and we have taken steps to ensure that there are viable consequences for the inappropriate actions of elected officials and staff. The town's sexual harassment policy is in the process of being comprehensively updated and strengthened and a recall provision for all elected, that would apply to all elected town officials is currently in the final stages of approval by the State Senate. The Select Board would like to thank the community members who have been instrumental in making these changes possible. Finally, for complete transparency, any documents, including ones that were withheld by the former Select Board, will be released to the public as soon as legally possible. The Select Board expresses its sincere regret that this incident occurred and is committed to making Wenham a safe and respectful workplace for all employees. So that is the press release, hoping to bring closure to the situation, but also to keep our residents informed of the status of that. That's all I have for my report. Do, Gary, do you have anything that for the Select Board report that you'd like to say tonight?
No, I think we're moving along. Glad to see that we've got new people coming on board and anticipate a couple more with the Assistant Town Administrator. And I think we have good candidates for the DPW as well.
Great. Diane, anything you'd like to share tonight?
Nothing for me.
Okay. So we do have a consent agenda this evening with a number of minutes. Take a motion for that.
Coming right up. I, I approve the Select Board minute, meeting, open session minutes for September 18th, 2021. The workshop, September 21st, 2021, October 19th, 2021, November 3rd, 2021, and November 16th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, we'll move to a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So unanimous? And thank you Catherine Tinsley and Diane for writing the minutes and reviewing the minutes. So now on to what Ryan was addressing earlier. What we were hoping would be able to be a tax classification hearing tonight. I guess there's been a little delay, but Ryan, is it right to, do you want to introduce any more of this or?
No, I think, I think if I could, if I could turn it over to, to Steve, the birthday boy, give him, give him the floor and just provide an overview where things currently stand. And, you know, just, just where things are right now.
Happy 29th birthday, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also want to announce that my second grandchild has been born. And wow, is now, is now a week and a half old. Popped out a few weeks early, but all is well. And I can't tell you how thrilled I was to finally get to hold him after a slight delay. However, given the slight delay, because of my having tested positive for COVID, I was actually in here on Thanksgiving, working on this. It was great. There was nobody here.
That's good.
But I took a lot of work home and my, once my quarantine period expired, I've been in here ever since. And I have been available to answer any and all questions, which I did in a timely manner. The level of minutia that I have provided or had to correct is surprising and disappointing. But the, the, the big picture is that I truly believe that we are, in fact, I just checked to see if I had an email to say if we had been approved. But it's, it's imminent. It's going to be within a day or two. Now, please keep in mind that the classification hearing, we are not approving a tax rate. What we are doing when we have the actual classification hearing is we're going to be looking at the different options that are available to the Select Board as far as certain exemptions and exclusions and so forth are available, none of which have ever applied to the town of Wenham or the town of Hamilton, and none of which apply now. And so it is somewhat of a formality. This is obviously a much different conversation or meeting when we're dealing with a city which might have a split tax rate, residential and commercial. Classification can then be a very complex discussion. So when we have our classification building, just to touch briefly, we do not, number one, we could move to have an exemption of up to 25% of open space. We have no open space that qualifies under this, under this category. So therefore, the answer would be no. Move to adopt a 20% residential exemption, up to a 20%. That, that is also something that applies to places like Brookline or Somerville, where if you have people who are occupying two, three, four, five family as an owner, you, they get a discount to encourage resident, residents, owner residents. And obviously Wenham has a minimal number of rental properties, investment properties. So therefore, that would not apply to us at all. And I want to point out that i- if we were to do something regarding the commercial tax rate, a split rate, let's say, if we were to literally double the taxes on every business in town, the effect on a average tax bill might be a dollar. So whereas we'd be putting the businesses out of business. So therefore, number two would not apply. And the same with the number three, that I've actually just merged the two and three, the small commercial exemption. That doesn't apply to us because we do not have, that, that applies to communities that have a split rate. So that does not apply to us. And then the number four would be to have a split rate, which is no point in having for the town of Wenham due to the lack of a commercial tax base. So when we have our meeting, then we will be voting, you will be voting at the recommendation of the Board of Assessors, two of whom are in attendance, John Buco and Tom Tienis. But they will be in attendance next week and maybe Lisa as well. But the board will be recommending one tax rate and that's it. We also do not know what our property tax rate will be. We should have, we will actually probably have that available, at least a ballpark number within a few cents at a meeting next week. And as I said, or as Ryan said, the meeting next week can be literally five minutes. And I am very disappointed that I am inconveniencing other people. I gotta, I've gotta tell you, it's not me. The Department of Revenue right now is dealing with, you know, a lot of communities that have, that are in our position. They are prioritizing as they choose to do. I have been available, as I said, anything they requested, they got back from me within a half hour, 45 minutes max. So the separate Select Board vote doesn't apply right now because this isn't a classification approval hearing meeting. And I would simply say that if anyone has any questions, I will happily attempt to address them.
I know that we'll have more later, but questions for Steve this evening?
No, I think I've, independently, we've gone through the process. So we just know that here in COVID times, the state is responding as it can. And we'll just have to take a little bit of delay here.
Yep.
And I'm presuming that, well, of course, I'll have to wait for the DR to actually provide the information that we need. And then I believe we'll have to post this as a hearing as we did before.
Yes.
And is it just posted, the usual posting of 48 hours in advance? Okay. So Ryan, I'm sure we'll get back to us when, when we know when this might be. Okay. So we're essentially moved, did not act on that agenda item tonight. We will as soon as we can. Thank you, Steve, for your work and for coming by. And thanks to the Board of Assessors for stopping by as well. We'll see you then.
You're welcome. And Tom, did you want to say something? No? Okay. I saw you, I saw you raise your hand and you muted. So you're all set.
I think he was waiting.
Okay. Well, we will, we will see you next week. And again, I apologize for any inconvenience. But as the saying goes, stuff happens. Thank you.
Go have a happy birthday.
Yes. Take care. So, so the rest, actually the, yeah, the rest of this meeting, it has to do with our town clerk and, and her responsibilities. The first one is a discussion and possible vote regarding the establishment of two voting precincts in Wenham. Trudy is here. There's a presentation that I believe is in your packets. I'm going to ask Trudy, I feel like if you really start at the beginning as the presentation does, that would be good because I've been polling a few people today. There are people in town that don't even realize that we've been redistricted. So this will be an interesting, you know, a good education for lots of folks. So. I'll turn it over to Trudy unless you have something to add before we start, Ryan. Okay. Take it away, Trudy.
Okay, thanks. So just as a little background, before we get to the slides, I received, I believe you guys voted several weeks ago to stay at one precinct. And I thought we were done with it. I thought we were going to be one precinct with two legislative voting districts. But I received an email last, it was on Friday, November 19th, from the census people indicating because we are being split between representatives. And I learned something new under Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 6, that Wenham is under the 6,200 in population. So because of that, the Board of Selectmen can vote to go to two precincts. Anything over 6,200, we are required to go to two precincts. So that was something new that I learned, that you guys have the right to vote if we want to go to precincts. So just by law, no more than 4,000 persons per precinct and the variance of no more than plus or minus 5%. So Wenham's total population based on the 2020 federal census is 4,979. And the way the state has drawn the lines for voting purposes, if we were to go to two precincts, precinct one would have 2,473 residents and precinct two would have 2,506. So we're within that plus or minus 5%. So the first slide that we've got up here just sort of takes us through what I briefly talked about and also where the split would be made. So the split's coming down 1A. So part of the right side of 1A would be in one voting precinct district and left side would be in the other. And then it takes a turn going down Perkins and Porter. But they're giving us this opportunity now, based on the information that we have, if we want to align precincts along with the new districts to ease the election process and across all elections. So the deadline to make this change is December 15th, which is actually a little bit of a lie because late this afternoon, I, in the meantime, since I received this email, I've been questioning the Census Division. I've had numerous emails from state elections, just making sure that I understood this whole process. So I reached out to the Census people today and although they will be making their decision on December 15th, we actually need to vote and inform them no later than December 13th because apparently the Census people are hosting a meeting to go all through this on December 15th. So we have to meet their open meeting all 48 hours. So if you set a meeting with Steve next week or so, you may want to add me in there if you decide that you're going to need some time to process this and then come back for a vote. But I was hoping that you'd be able to take the vote, if you didn't take it tonight, that you've taken on the 14th. But that's not the case because they need to know at the latest, November, yeah, December 13th. And at that time, what I will provide to them is whether, if we have voted to go to two precincts, I will have to write a new boundary description because I've already provided them with one if we were staying one precinct. So if we go to precincts, I'll have to update the boundaries description. So if we want to go to the next slide, just give you, so this is the map. And on the right-hand side, it's a little tiny, but you can see the population and how the split would be made between the two precincts. And the map will show you how it's going to be split. So the gold would be precinct two and the blue or the purple, however you're looking at it, would be precinct one if we were to go into precincts. I forgot the map was next. So and I, and I found out late this afternoon, Catherine and I can send this to you, but I can send a detail, a better little map that shows what it was before and what it is now, if you need to see that. So you'll go to the next slide, Ryan. Thank you. So I've sort of tried to do my pros and cons. So if we stay one precinct, we'll basically have two subprecincts. So we'll be precinct one and precinct 1A. So during this education process, I've gone through the last week or so, I found out that any election, this is based on a four-year period. So we're going to have four town elections, one presidential, two state primaries, one state election and one state presidential election. So any election that we have, if we stay a subprecinct that does not have our state reps on, we can treat it as one election, one voting, you know, one voters list, one ballot box, one tabulator. Because if the ballot would be the same. ballot box, one tabulator, because if the ballot would be the same for both precincts, if it's a sub precinct. So the voters, you know, on the local election and the state presidential primary, which is in March of that fourth year, the voters would still have the current experience that they have now with our current elections, with our local elections. If, but they would only have a different voting experience in our state elections where the state reps are on the ballot. So that would be the September primary, November general elections. The cost will be a little bit higher because as a sub precinct, for those state elections, I'm still going to have to have two check-in stations, two voters' lists, two tabulators and two ballot boxes. If we were to go to two precincts, all the elections would stay separate. We would, so they, the voters would have the same experience all the way through with every election. It would be, we'd have double the staffing, two check-in tables, two ballot boxes. And for bigger elections, we may want to consider maybe going back to Bucor for the presidential or some of those that may draw out more voters. And during that scenario, the voters would continue to vote the same way. They check in a precinct one, they put their ballot in a certain ballot box, precinct two would check in precinct two. So and then the cost would basically double from what we're doing today because of the extra staff that we would need. So we, the good thing is, right now, we currently have two tabulators and two ballot boxes and two poll pads. So at the situation that we're in, I mean, the equipment that we have now can handle any scenario that we go with, whether we stay a sub precinct or we go precinct one and precinct two. At some point, if we go into two precincts, we may want to look at purchasing another tabulator and a poll pad to have as backup in case the equipment crashes on Election Day. And the precincts go into effect on December thirty-first, but the districts will go into effect on January twenty-three, when the new officials are sworn in after the twenty-twenty-two state and general election. This only happens every ten years. Once our choices made, we're locked into it. And the number of voters, Catherine, I know this was a concern to you for Gordon College, the number of voters isn't relevant to the district or precinct because it's based on population and not voters. So I pulled some numbers together for Gordon College because they're going to be totally in one precinct or the other. So there's about a thousand one hundred and twenty-four students, which represents out of that is the forty-nine seventy-nine or about forty-five percent of the town that they would be in. So we will see. I forget where that number is. I think there's only like seventy-seven registered voters out of that. One thousand one hundred and twenty-four students that currently live on campus. So we will see a little bit of a voting difference between the two precincts because of the college not being fully registered. So I'm going to say that, well, first of all, do you guys have any questions? I talked really fast, so I'm sorry, but do you have any questions?
Diane, oh, sorry, Gary, get your hand up.
Yes, during the ten-year period, does anything change if we fall out of that five percent balance?
State elections told me that sometimes that can happen and we would have to go before them for approval. She, she gave me an example that years ago, Andover had a sub precinct and the population dwindled so much in one of the sub precincts that they could actually basically determine who was voting and how they were voting. So that wasn't fair to the voters. So there was a process that they went through to get everybody back into that one precinct. So if our population drastically dropped, yeah, we can do something like that.
Thank you.
Diane? No questions? I was counting on you to have questions.
No questions yet, no.
This is, it's simple but complicated. So I probably have a million questions, but a couple. Thank you for looking at the Gordon numbers. I think you said there were seventy-seven voters from Gordon?
Well, I can't, I, let me.
Or roughly, it's less than a hundred?
I believe it's less than a hundred. I forget where I made those notes. And may have put it in an email to myself and then I forgot to print it. It was low.
That's okay. It's low, yeah. Oh, that, I guess that's my point. And it's, it's an issue that we have in a lot of states, a lot of reporting that, that relies on census data because those students are counted as residents and yet they're not full-time residents. So and that doesn't affect this particular decision. But I just wanted to make sure that I understand. So if we were to go to two precincts, or indeed if we have a precinct A and B, the precinct lines would fall along the district lines. So precinct one would be District one, precinct two would be District two. I mean, they're the same.
Yes, yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. And so it's just the pre, if we, you know, we move to two precincts and it will go into effect on December thirty-first, is that December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one? Like this year?
Wait a minute, let me go back and look. The precincts go into effect December thirty-first, yes.
So at our, yeah.
But the districts, they don't go into effect until twenty twenty-three. So if we decide to go to two precincts, our first election, our local election in twenty-twenty-two will be divided by two precincts.
Right. And as will the local election or any elections in twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
And then twenty twenty-three, okay. So just, I, I know the answer to this question, but I've gotten a couple of questions about the question. So we're just, I won't say we're just, we're talking about precincts here. The redistricting, dividing Wenham into two has already happened. It was done in the legislature. We have no, there's no going back on that.
Correct. The only thing that we can do now is to either vote to stay one precinct with sub precincts or we can go into two precincts.
Okay.
That's our only option at this moment.
Okay. Comments? So a couple of things about this, I'm sorry to interrupt my question, but my thinking on this is that, as is our usual case, I think a lot of people will be interested in this information, but of course, we're not going to really be able to access it or know about it. And I would normally, as I always do, suggest that we, that we have a second meeting to actually vote so that there's a little bit of time for the public to absorb this. But with what Trudy said, you know, that's, I guess, well, we have to have a meeting next week, so it's possible. But I'm just interested just to hear what both Diane and Gary think about this, just at this point.
So if I could just make a comment really quick for anybody that's listening and could be a little confused, because we've been split into voting districts, we were, for every state election that our state reps are on, we're going to have two different ballot styles. So that's really what it comes down to. Except for the local election in the March presidential primary. So that's really the only difference we're seeing. The voters' list will be split accordingly and precinct one will be given one ballot, precinct two will be given a different ballot.
But the same thing would have happened if we were in precinct one and one A, right?
That's correct.
Yes, so from.
Except at local elections and then March presidential primary.
Right. But for the citizen coming in to vote, the only change for them is they're going to have to go to the right table. Whether it's one, one A or one or two.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, but the voting process will be all the same. So I'm thinking that, you know, as this is a ten-year decision, that I think it's not having really any effect on the voter themselves, other than pick the right table, that we ought to consider the, the cost factor here. And that if Trudy says, you know, the one, one A is about a forty-five percent increase and the other's a hundred percent, then I think that's a, a major factor to consider.
And the majority of our cost is going to be in staffing because the state pays for the, at state elections, the state pays for the, the printing of the ballots. It's, you know, obviously it's going to increase our postage, programming the memory cards that we're responsible for. And the staffing itself is not, you know, we pay a minimum wage, so it's not huge. And we've been able to eliminate the checkout table. So we're only staffing a check-in, probably for the first or second election. I'd probably have an extra person standing there directing traffic so that they know which precinct they're going to. And I could see a lot of leading up to the first election that's going to affect, just a lot of outreach and education to our voters so that they understand what's going on.
What do you think, Diane? Have any?
So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a same, amount of work either way, I almost think. I thought the money should come into play. That's, that's a big difference, I think. But are we paying the election officers? I thought with Anthony, we had cut that out of the budget. Is that back in there, Trudy? I have put it back in for FY twenty-three. And when you did the budget for FY twenty-two, there was a little money in there. So what I've been doing is I've been paying the warden and the election clerks because the warden is there all day. The election clerk is, I've got two that they're splitting the day, but it's a long day and they're expected to know more than, I don't want to say just the average election worker, but there's a lot more responsibility on the warden and the clerk. So the last two elections, I have paid them. Yeah, I think that's what the money was there for too, yeah. I am. That's good. Yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm really kind of torn. Which, which way would you prefer as clerk? Not going there. It's the same, you know, it's going to be very similar work. Right. You know, whether this is a good or bad thing, when I was in North Andover, at one point, I was dealing with three different ballot styles. So I've got the experience. But with every election, with every city or town that's got different ballots, there's going to be human errors. It's going to happen that somebody's going to get the wrong ballot. I mean, for one of our twenty twenty elections, the state packaged our ballots for us. They put them in the envelopes and they, they put the instructions and they made mistakes. So we were mailing out those ballots and the, you know, the voters are telling us, oh, I got the wrong ballot. So mistakes are going to happen no matter, as, you know, I, I'd like to think that no mistakes will happen. But obviously, you know, we can set up the poll pads so that it only can check in precinct one or precinct two so that they can't check in at the wrong precinct and get the wrong ballot. So that's a step that we can take to help cut back on errors. I can space them far apart in whatever room we're using so that precinct one is on one side, precinct two is on the other side. So those ballots aren't getting mixed up. I've learned a lot of lessons in North Andover. So I bring that experience with me and knowing that mistakes can happen, I would take that extra precaution and, and keep it as separate as I can. I, I think the, another hard part is going to be educating the voter. I'm, I'm afraid if they come into a local election and they're voting, you know, they're picking up the ballot at the same table, then they come in in September, then they're going to be split between two tables. To me, it's confusion for them. And I'm sure after, I mean, I, I still have people, you know, in North Andover and Lynnfield who, you know, voted every election and they still didn't know what precinct they were in. So, I mean, that's just the, the nature of the business. They're just, they just forget. I mean, you know, we all forget. So it's just the education and being patient with them on Election Day so that they get to the right place.
I'm, I'm sure, you know, this happens in every place that has more than one precinct. But, so I think, so if someone were sent an absentee ballot by any, whoever sends them out, and it happened to be the wrong ballot, and they showed up and they mailed it in, I, I guess we, there was an education piece there. They would have, so they, if they noticed, oh, I have the wrong ballot here. These aren't the people I'm supposed to be voting for, they could come into Town Hall and get the correct ballot.
Either that or they could call us and, and, and we could spoil that ballot and give them another one, or they could come in as long as that ballot has not been received and we've already processed it, they can come in and vote in person. So there are, there are safeguards that if somebody notices that they got the wrong ballot, that we are, we can work with them to make sure they get the right ballot.
It, so it is a difficult, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Was that you, Diane?
No, it was, but go ahead, you finished.
Okay, I was just going to say, it is a difficult decision because on the one hand, I think we've all sort of said this, the easiest thing probably for the voters is to have two precincts so that at every election, they sort of do the same thing. But to everyone else's point, the, the cost is a little bit daunting. And I, I have this nagging feeling, probably just me, that we, having never done this, we don't exactly know if there are unintended consequences in the process in Wenham. So I wish, I kind of wish the state, just sort of give us a little heads up, let us run a mock election, you know, try it for one year and go back. But clearly, none of those are options. So if the decision that we make now and where, the only thing that I could imagine that would change the population in one of the precincts is if Gordon closed. And that would, you know, but even then, so I think it's, seems like it should be straightforward, but I don't feel so straightforward. So anyway, Diane, I'm sorry, I didn't.
So I think the comment, the comment you made that it would be more consistent for the voters as two precincts, I think is true, although I still think that no matter what, people come to an election like they've never voted before, every single time. Yeah. You know, Chris Pietro still has to put that sign up, no voting here, we voted Town Hall, people, I always voted Town Hall. I mean, are we voting at Bucor? Right, yeah. So I, I would almost, because of that, I would, I would not go for the two precincts just for that reason. I don't think it really makes a difference. I think that people vote so in frequently that it's hard to, to know one way or the other. And like Trudy said, it's a lot of education at every election. I guess maybe I'd go with the least expensive route right now, knowing what our money system is like, situation is like.
And as a practical matter, I mean, if it's one and one A or one and two setup, you know, the voter coming in is still in either option, going to have to make the decision of which table I should be at. Is that correct, Trudy?
Yes.
Yes. So I think, you know, from, from the voter's practical perspective, you know, it really doesn't make a difference whether we go one, one A or one and two, because they're still going to need to find the right table, whichever the label is.
Except for local elections and the March presidential primary.
Right. Which is what, two out of ten anticipated?
Well.
In the next four years?
Over the next four years, we'll have four locals. And then we'll have the March presidential primary.
Yeah.
So five, five to four. Right.
So but on those cases, would you, it would be one ballot, but would you still have to maintain the two tables because you've got two different roles?
No, that's where we save the cost in staffing.
All right.
And that's, that's what state elections told me. That's, you know, that's an advantage to staying a sub precinct is that you can run your local
Yeah.
as one election.
Yeah. So that would save us a little bit of money on those five elections, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I know you've done a heck of a lot of research in a very short period of time. Appreciate that, Trudy. Is there anything that you wish you knew or a question that you have that you have not been able to get an answer for?
No, no.
Okay.
The state, they've been very helpful. They've been very accessible and, and I've, I've, I've been amazed at their response getting back to me and giving me extra feedback that I hadn't even asked for.
That's great. Good to know.
Well, in any case, we need to make this decision by next week if we're going to pair it up with the assessor's question, so.
Right. So that's a question for the board. Honestly, if I think the notion of two, of going from one precinct to two precincts will have the appearance of being a bigger change, you know, the optics of it. And so I would highly recommend that we wait until next week. If what I'm hearing, it seems like the, the. the it's going in the way of just going to subprecincts, which, you know, that's going to happen and this is going to require a lot of education. So I I guess the question is, are we comfortable voting on this tonight? Or do we, knowing that we have another meeting, is there anything to gain by by waiting? Usually for me, it's public input, but I don't know on this one. What do you think, guys?
Yeah, I think, you know, public input probably is not going to be a choice of one way or the other, but just questions about how am I going to vote? You know, informational kind of questions. So I'm I'm think I'm ready. Or if you want, we can wait till next week.
Diane?
I agree. I think I I would, uh, I think we should just vote. I think we could vote. I think I think Gary's right. If anyone, if any comment comes in, it's going to be, well, why do we have to go to change it at all? Why do we have to do this? And how am I going to do this? And that's more stuff that'll happen whenever the change happens, anyway.
Right, right. And if we just, if if we end up voting to have two subprecincts, are are we actually? Uh, so is a vote still needed? Because we've already voted to be one precinct.
That's my understanding that that you're only voting if you decide to go to one, two precincts. Okay.
So folks are ready. So I guess the the way this could be worded is, you know, as a as a motion. No. Do we want to move to two precincts, right? And if it's no, then by default.
I really didn't think you'd vote tonight, so we didn't prepare a motion.
I I would prefer not to vote tonight. I really would, only because it's it's a lot of information and it's new. And I have been, you know, trying to keep up with it, but it's just, that's just my bias in terms of making a major, a semi-major change to something as important to people as voting without any, you know, public outreach, you know, vote on the same night. But to, I understand Gary's, I understand there's a time constraint. And I also understand Gary's point that I, it's not so much don't do this or do this as how do we do it? And that's a question we're going to, those are questions we're going to have to answer in either case. And it sounds like the other two board members are ready to vote. So I guess well, I'll let our motion maker craft a motion on this. We'll see where it goes.
Well, as I understand it, we, if we are going with the subdistrict, correct me, Trudy, but there's no vote if we just want to stay with the vote we took a couple of months ago, right?
That's my understanding because the master of law says if you go into two precincts, you have to vote.
Okay, so why don't we just leave it that the public out there in the next few days, if you really, 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 you know, want to go to two, let us know. But otherwise, you know, a no action tonight leaves it as a subprecinct.
Is that, that's.
Is that right, Ryan? Is that how you see it?
Yep, that's I think you have.
That's, that sounds like a good idea. To that end, maybe we could put something on the website, just, you know, let people know that this is happening. If we're waiting a couple of days, you know, maybe we can do some outreach. I really, I always wish in these situations that we had a good way to reach a lot of people in a short period of time and people, and we do, which is the website, except if I had to guess, I'm going to guess there's a large portion of our voters who don't spend a lot of time on our website. So it has, for me, that has limited usage, but we could do a little, you know, a little publicizing of it anyway.
So the non-vote, so the non-vote tonight leaves us in a one and one A or a subprecinct setup. And then, yeah, and that Diane, that's, you know, the way you're drifting anyhow.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, so, all right.
And so we'll just have to gauge, and I'm happy to, anyone who receives any input, we'll just have to gauge whether or not we need a vote on Tuesday. If for some reason there's an avalanche of public input or Trudy finds out something new before our our meeting, and we do need a vote, we'll we'll have to, you know, put that on the agenda. So we'll just have to keep, you know, keep tabs with that. But we're getting pretty resilient and flexible with our agenda. So I think we'll be able to handle that.
So just to recap, for now, we're staying as the subprecinct.
I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay, so I will do nothing at this point unless you decide that you've heard enough public input that you think it's worth a vote at a possible meeting next week.
And there might be some merit, we'll see, but there might be some merit at our meeting next week to eat, at least make an announcement or clarify what has happened. We're not taking a vote, we're staying with precincts, with subprecincts or, you know, if it if it turns out that we're, we don't end up taking a vote, so we don't leave this kind of hanging. So we'll just clarify that at our meeting next week.
Is that date been set?
Uh.
It is not. No, I think it depends on when we can finalize the 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 forms for DOR.
Okay.
But it will, it will be next week, you think, Ryan?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because don't want to miss a deadline if we don't have to. Okay, well, again, thanks for that information, Trudy. Interesting times. Um, the next item is again, town clerk item, and it's a request to change vital certificate fees. And Trudy's provided us some info, information on that as well.
So what got me to thinking on this recently, a clerk did a survey to see what other clerks were charging and with the cost of paper going up and the increased need for residents to request certified copies for sports or driver's license, it got me to thinking that should we be looking at raising our fees? Wyndham has been charging $5 for a certified copy for as long as I can remember. And that's going back when Fran Young was was clerk. And because this fee is not listed in our bylaws, that's why I wanted to come before the board tonight because you have the option to to vote to raise the fees or not. So this is just a little breakdown of what you're looking at. Of the hundred and sixty-nine that replied to the survey out of three hundred and fifty-one municipalities, I looked at fifteen surrounding communities around us. And just based on their fee, the average of these fifteen communities is $9.33. And of that, eleven of these fifteen communities charged $10. Then the the next spreadsheet down, the seventy-seven communities, I wanted to look at them and based it on a population of less than 10,000, since Wyndham's sort of in the middle of that number of population of the people who replied. Forty-six, the average comes out to $8.53, again, closer to the $10. And forty-six, more than half of the seventy-seven communities, charged $10. So it appears that the majority of the communities charged $10. And I I noticed that out in the western part of the state, they are a little bit lower because of their demographics and their economics. So, you know, their cost of living is probably not, you know, what we have on the North Shore. So based on the information in the survey, I feel comfortable coming to you tonight to see if we, effective January first, to raise the cost per vital, certified vital to $10 each.
So Trudy, could you quickly list for the public exactly which documents this applies to marriage and?
I'm sorry, yes, it's birth, marriage and death certificates.
All right.
So they can, I mean, they can, you know, a a birth certificate can be gotten at, if if the baby's born in Beverly, they can go to Beverly to get that, which they're probably, I don't know that they responded. Could charge more or the same, where they could come to us for a little bit less. But but the the parents have that option. Normally, I'm sure families of deceased pay somewhat through the funeral home. A lot of, we get a lot of requests for the funeral home for death certificates. And I'm sure the families at some point are paying for that. And marriage certificate, you know, they choose to get married. So and and they don't, they're not as common to me as birth and death certificates.
And where does the money goes into the general fund?
Yes.
So every little bit helps budget-wise.
Every little bit helps.
And I think, you know. And you know, looks like everybody else has gone into the $10 range.
Right.
Diane?
So, and you might also want to add that if someone wants to, they can go through the state vitals. And that's going to cost them $25 to $50 to get
That's true.
any of those certificates. So
Yes.
Um, it sounds like we're increasing the fees just to make money. We're not just increasing the fees to make money. It takes time. It takes the paper itself. Sometimes you have to mail it. It does take time to prepare one of these certificates. So, you know, a $5 for the time it takes is not really, doesn't even cover. So $10 is, might even help.
And I and I'd like to say that when I was in office the first time in two, between 2010 and 2014, gentleman came in, his his wife had literally just passed away and he he needed death certificates. And that's not a time I want to ask people for money. So I kind of on the side started a practice that if the family, if a family member comes in within a year, I just give them five copies. I mean, I'm not, it, you know, they're in a bad situation. You know, they're, you know, they're grieving. That hasn't happened too much in Wyndham since I've come back, but I've done it in other communities that if the family member themselves comes in and I just, you know, just make them a few copies just to make it easier for them at that time of their grief. But the majority of them do come through funeral homes.
I think that's a very compassionate thing to do, Trudy, and probably at very little extra cost, which an increased fee would cover. But having been there myself, dealing with, you know, all of the paperwork that you need to know that there's someone on the other side that wants to help you and not just collect your money is a is a good thing, as an aside. I I think this is going to be a fairly straightforward decision. However, tonight, what we have before us is just a request to change the fees. And as again, as our practice, we will put this on the agenda to take, to put to a vote on the fourteenth, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting. And I guess my my own perspective on this is it looks like everyone, it looks like we're not in the majority. Most people are charging $10 and that's a reasonable amount. So we'll put it on the agenda on the fourteenth and and I'm confident that we'll be able to take a vote at that time.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for the information. Having the data was so helpful. It's always nice to make data.
Well, it was nice that somebody else started the survey and I just, we just ran some numbers, so.
Always nice. Yeah, always nice. Okay, so moving on to old business. I thank you to folks, Gary, who has, this is a potential vote on the draft select board reverse nine-one-one policy. This is almost a second reading since we did spend a fair amount of time reviewing other policies of other towns. But we have before us tonight a draft of a nine-one-one policy, which I believe Gary had had something to do with. So thanks for your help with this. You may, you may have a, you know, a second career in policies, I think, Gary, in case you, you know, decide to quit your day job. So questions or comments about the the policy that we have, the reverse nine-one-one policy that's before us here? Diane?
No, I think it's done really well. It looks very similar to Phillips, done whatever that town was called. But what is TDD? The system can notify large numbers of people in a short period of time by several methods, telephone, text, email or TDD.
That's for the death?
Death, yeah.
Okay.
Hard to hearing.
Thank you.
Gary, did you have any particular comments you wanted to make about this?
No, I think we just tried to simplify some of the other examples. And, you know, from what we heard at the last meeting, try to limit the overuse of the system, but make it flexible enough that not knowing all the possible situations to leave it with the town administrator or responsible parties in the town to make the call if they had to.
Yeah, I really appreciated that part of it. I think this is a a good policy, felt simple. But I did appreciate the fact that there there was the contemplation that there could be an issue that's not on the list and that there should be people who have the discretion to, you know, make decisions. So that was a piece of it that I thought was important. Only have, I I think there's one typo. On the second page, the top line, I didn't look, it's under procedure? Necessitating. I think, I don't know if that's a typo, if that's spelled correctly, but I just noticed this when I was reading it. Other than that, I'm I'm fine with this. And personally, as I said, I I feel like this is a second reading since we've literally seen a lot of it and discussed it and talked about what we thought was important. And all of those things seem to be reflected in this particular version of a of a policy. So I I'm feeling like we don't really need two readings of this. And the December fourteenth meeting is getting kind of full. So do folks feel as if they are ready to vote on this tonight?
Yeah.
And?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, very simple motion, too. Maybe as presented at the end or something.
Move to approve the reverse nine-one-one policy as presented.
Second.
Last minute discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote. Diane?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Thanks for that. I think the most important part of it was to have a list that is clear and in general will cover most things. So the last thing, let's see, I actually have a couple of notes on this last item. Let me just get to my page. So other matters, I don't have really any other matters. I did want to talk a bit about meeting dates. We've already talked about or mentioned that our next regularly scheduled meeting is December fourteenth. I anticipate that we'll have licenses ready to vote on then. And, you know, a few other things for the agenda. We have on December eighteenth, sounds like I can't believe that. Already is our Saturday capital budget meeting, which I think Brian mentioned earlier. I think we said eight-thirty, start on that.
Correct.
I did want to, and now we know next week sometime, we will have a tax classification hearing so that we can get that done in time. And Ryan, we'll just wait to hear from you of when 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 we need to have that. There's one other meeting that has come about that I just wanted to mention. The next regularly scheduled FinCom meeting is December fifteenth. And the FinCom Chair Jim Purdy met with him today, Ryan and and David Reed. And Jim would is planning to change that agenda. It was originally going to be a review of capital, but we're doing that on that Saturday. So he's changing the agenda to allow for 10-minute presentations by, I think it's either four or five department heads that were not, did not give presentations of, gosh, was it last Saturday before last meeting? So there'll be, is it four or five, Ryan? I've now forgotten. I remember, thought we said 50 minutes, so that sounds like five.
Yeah, I think it, we, maybe actually six, depending on if we include inspectional services. So five or six, I'll confirm that with Jim.
Okay, so short presentations, but allow them, allow everyone, we did, I did see an email this evening from someone from the library requesting, requesting to be heard. So anyway, that's a meeting that that the FinCom is having, and that's their agenda for December fifteenth. It seems to me that this is important information. And we keep expressing our desire to communicate. So I just wanted to check in with the. Um, so I just wanted to check in with the Diane and with Gary, um. To see if folks would be attending that meeting. I, I will be attending, but if anyone else, um. Is planning to attend that meeting, we will post it so that we have the ability to, you know, have it, ask any questions. Um, so. Thoughts? December fifteenth, six-thirty, Wednesday night.
Yeah, I'll probably try to get there.
Yeah, I can do.
Okay, so Ryan, if you could post that. I don't think it'll be a very long meeting and we'll round out the presentations.
And we also have, what, eight December two for the uh, this five-way school?
Right, right, and I think, um, I think I saw Ryan. And Trudy just posted that.
Right. Yeah, I said in the beginning in the meeting, right?
Right, and as of, I, I will point out that that meeting uh was intent, in, originally intended to be an in-person meeting in the Bukeur School. And the decision has now been made by someone that it's going to be a Zoom meeting. So the posting will reflect the fact that that will be a Zoom. Um, I think those are all of the upcoming meetings. Did I miss anything, Ryan?
You've got it covered.
Okay, so that's all I have. Is there anyone that, anything that anyone else wants to bring up or? Discuss tonight? Not seeing a lot of waving hands, that being said, I will take that motion.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Seconds.
Hey, I guess we can go right to a vote on that one, Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Um, I, I, I'll just, a very quick thing, this is a thank you, I think, um, we. Not, I think it is a thank you. I've been attending a lot of meetings lately and most of them have more people than this. But I really appreciate the fact that we've sort of fallen into this um, sort of routine of who votes and when we vote and. I appreciate that you're, you're um. Going along with this because we don't typically talk over each other and I've been watching a lot of meetings where inadvertently, people will just be talking over each other. And I think our process has kept it a little bit more organized, so thank you all for, for, for that. That's it.
You're welcome.
For tonight, we'll hear from Ryan next about our next meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.